Great, it is 6:30 PM on Monday, June 20th, 2022. This is the regular school board meeting of the Oaks Public School District 41. We're here in the Oaks Public Schools conference room and we are also on Zoom. We have, well, I'll just follow the agenda. We will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The agenda is before you. Do we have anything we needed to add to the agenda?
Yeah, we have the transfer of funds.
And where will that be? Action items, we'll make that item I. Transfer special reserve.
Should be two separate ones, right, Tom? One from special reserve to general, and then general to.
Okay, fun, we'll call it, I, item I, fund transfers. There will be a subletter one, special reserve to general, and number two, generals. Is there anything else? All right, with that, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that petition? Rosendall moves, is there a second?
I'll second.
Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes, agenda is approved as changed. I'd like to recognize our visitors, all board members are present as well as Mr. Gannon Orney, Mr. Getz, Gary Hogan is our recording secretary. We have here Mrs. Zell and Mr. Beta. And joining us on Zoom, we have Amy Dahlstrom, Dave Berlin, and Nikki Knoll. So, welcome and thank you for attending. Public communication. Oh, I gotta get my hat. I'm gonna have to get to the right spot. All right, today we have public communication, we have two shout-outs. Both are in honor of Mr. Getz. Mr. Getz has made a huge impact on this school since he has gotten here. He is always willing to step up to the plate and bring his best every day. He is always supporting the students at OPS, whether it's a sporting event or performance. He is there supporting 100% of the time. He has put in countless hours of effort and work into the school. I'm so proud that he chose to be our superintendent here. Thank you, Mr. Getz, for all you do for our school and community as a whole. Second, shout-out to Mr. Getz for coming to Oaks and making a difference. As a parent of multiple students in the school, your efforts are greatly appreciated and our family will notice the difference in accountability and performance. Thank you, so, thank you, Mr. Getz, and thank you patrons who have submitted shout-outs. No other public communication? Moving on to the reports, we do have an activities director's report, a fairly thorough report of the late season activities, our late school year activities, as well as a summary, a year-end review. Robin was unable to be with us this evening because of some appointments out of town, but a pretty complete report from her, so. Any questions or comments about that? If not, are there any committee reports? Did we decide there was going to be a report from? Okay. Robert or Ryan? Building Committee?
Okay, yeah, so. June, I think, was fifth, was bid opening or signing for the science floor project. There was one partial bid that was submitted, and it wasn't for the complete project. And the company that put it in decided to revoke it. Because there was no other ones there that had wanted to hold. Since it wasn't for for the whole job anyway, it wasn't able to be completed in time frame. So, the decision by the building committee was to delay the project for one year. Bid it next fall. So that everything can be in place, or when the school gets out, all the materials are here, it would actually get it done in the summer months without having to interfere with the classes. In order to use the room for this year, the tables, layout tables in the middle have to come up. Keep going as it is.
If those are removed, it's safe?
Yes, yep.
It doesn't matter?
It's, it's saved temporarily for one year. And so they said that, they noted that it was not a permanent fix by taking stuff off. So, that's great, that's what, you know, the engineer said that. Because, because we asked that question when it was taken out, can we use that as a way of classroom? And they said, no, that it's already dropped. Whatever was inch and a half, inch and three quarter in the center, so it's already, it's already what it is. Engineer said that if we, we didn't get, only got one bid, which was revoked, but they would expect much more interest in bidding in the fall. That's what a lot more contractors would be wanting to do it. A lot of them didn't bid this because it was during the summer and they couldn't get to it right away. And that was the biggest reason why. So, they thought in the fall, October, November, December, that's when typical contractors are bidding stuff. We get a lot more competitive bids, a lot more bids. So, that was kind of the other side of it. Everything we talked about?
And the other thing to look into too is how much are those facilities actually used? For future planning expense? Because if they're not being fully utilized, does the district replacing or putting back old equipment that's not used currently?
Right, that's another one. Do we, we mentioned estimate, are you not talking about?
I'd say not, because they asked not.
Because they said not to say no. So, the engineers estimate?
Engineers estimate, we're close.
Okay. So, anyway, it's a substantial amount of money. So, that's a very good question about do we, I guess, what do we do? Ideas that there be better bids in the fall, would they be best paid for the budget?
Okay.
Just to add to, I know that it's gonna be a matter of time, the playground is getting updated for the visually impaired. So, they're working on getting all those bids together as soon as they have that coming together for, to meet with the committee and at that point, hopefully, the community uses it. Go ahead, order those, because we're running out of time. I know they've been working on getting those together.
All right, thank you for your hard work on that committee. So, do, do we need to take any action to not do something? All right, principals' reports were in our packets. Is there anything that either of you would like to highlight about, solely about your reports? Okay, any questions, comments, board members?
I don't know if it's in this one or if it's in the super. Talking about the standard-based grading for the high school. And then talking about a conversion factor. What if we just didn't go to that, we don't have to convert, you know, change something, then have to convert it back to the standard, because the standard-based grading compared to the letter grading.
So, it'd be like if you get a one, two, three, or four, really convert that into a letter grade to get onto the transcript? Or if there has to be.
Yeah, I'm saying if we just stayed with the letter grade and then just having to go switching it and then also have to switch it back at the same time.
I guess that would be something, the push to go to standard-based grading was to walk with these kids very much elementary standard-based grading and kind of create a crosswalk there so they get a chance to look at what does a one, two, or three indicate for them? Once they get to the middle school, what does that look like eventually at the high school? So, if you're looking to go back, then you can't, if you're just gonna go letter grade, then it's more standard-based grading. You're just doing the same thing we've been doing. First, I'm learning part of that is the standard-based grading, part of that, first I saw. So, I'm talking about transitioning that for seventh, eighth grade. Two freshman classes that are getting piloted out in high schools.
And power school, I was like.
Yeah, our school, just the teacher's ledger of one, two, three, 3.5, or four. Our school, just like the intergrades now, sort of points, and it'll just kick off to a grade. So, the parents will still see a grade of how their kids do, two, three, or four.
So, like a percentage or just a grade?
Just a grade, there's not a percentage.
So, how does that affect college-wise, looking at high school transcripts? Are any colleges that are gonna see that and say, is this, is it gonna look different as far as like a that, or they could see and say, is this standard-based grading, we don't accept this, or is it not an issue?
Northern gas is standard-based grading, they don't do any letter grade, they'll obviously accept them. So, it's pretty, it's pretty open now, but they'll, they'll still get a GP, they'll still see that on the transcript.
So, there's no issues with that?
Any other questions for the principals on their reports? If not, the superintendent's report. I was supposed to remind you to say something.
We're at the, I got the specialized meeting this morning, and one of the things that we talked about was the budget. We were looking at the budget, same thing as what you guys will look next night. And as of right now, their budget is looking like it's gonna be close to about $400,000 in the red. So, that $400,000 is gonna be dispersed, possibly dispersed back to the schools. So, somewhere, we know that there was gonna be an increase just because of the same effects that you're, a lot of the schools are feeling. There wasn't a raise to this, to the unit because of the per pupil raise, but we still have to increase the expenses. So, the expenses kept growing, but the income slowed down and stopped almost at some points. So, somewhere along the line, that's gonna have to be made up. Just be aware of there's potentially somewhere between, I think, somewhere between 25% to 50% increase in tuition cost that we will be paying up to the specialty. So, just be aware of that.
So, when we look at our budget a bit later, the number that we have in there for special ed tuition should be, we need to increase.
We don't know exactly for sure yet, because another thing that they were looking at was, do we just start cutting staff? Is that another answer, is maybe we don't hire, not cut staff, but not hire the staff that are already short? Would that be enough to cover some of that? So, they're looking at some different options. I just want to make sure that you guys are aware there's potentially going to be a pretty good increase of specialty side of things. Does that help answer what you're asking?
Just to be aware that when, when we look at the budget, the first reading today, lots of things are not necessarily what they're going to end up to be, but that's one specific item that will be, that we should anticipate a possible increase in expenditures. All right, any other?
This bus grant, it's for existing ones?
Yeah, that would be replacing the oldest bus that you guys have now. That would be replacing, that's what they used for this. For this grant, it was an old manual transmission, like a 99.
Like what, yes, the bus we already ordered, we can apply this to, or we?
No, no, it should be a new one, it should be a new one. I believe there was money put into the budget for this already, we hadn't planned on that. I know when April was here, we were talking about that. So, I don't know if anybody wanted to see that.
So, the, the, the bus we have on order, we expect to be here when?
That was January.
And did we get the clean diesel grant applied to that one? So, this is the VW grant?
Yep, different grant.
Do we have to basically destroy the old bus?
Same concept, similar concept, it's just that this one is going to probably allow a little bit more flexibility in the grant. As far as the dollar amount, it's gonna be very close to the same.
And with this one?
I think it's, it's a little bit more because the quote, the quote that we had, we used one of the old quotes. So, that helped us to increase the dollar, it's about half.
And how long do we have to use this round?
That's all out yet. It doesn't say in here, but I believe that it is the end of next year, so by August of 2023.
No, I was gonna ask, I don't know what time after you, same question.
All right, are there any other questions? I've already gone to my next page, so what else was on the superintendent's report that should be highlighted, anything? Okay, all right, so my report, as, as you know, as I let you all know that Dr. Johnson wasn't able to be here to report to us personally because he's at the Port Ransum School Board Meeting this evening. So, I'll just share some highlights from my memo to the board. Dr. Johnson met with a group of our staff and administrators last Tuesday. He said he focused on keeping things positive and identifying goals. He was very complimentary of the staff, the group that he met with. Some of the, he recommends that no new initiatives be implemented in 2022, 23. They identified some goals that will, we should consider for 22, 23, professional development planning, special ed staffing, food service, the change now with no free meals any longer and the transition in the business manager position and making sure that all the paperwork is done seemed to be a concern and something that needed to be addressed. New managed device system, which I'm not really sure what that is. Am I missing something? I was wondering that too. Okay, I don't know what that means, so. Improving the school climate, particularly in the high school, and then hiring and retention of coaches, particularly basketball, which we've hired the boys' coach and a girls' interviews are pending, so we'll have.
Did he elaborate anything on the high school?
Um, no. His recommendation to us is that the board consider naming Anna as our interim superintendent for the 2022, 23 school year and allow her to focus on leading in her areas of strength. I did visit with Anna, she is open to that. Dr. Johnson further recommends that we form a committee, which would include Anna and Brandon and Tom and two board members to work together with Dr. Johnson to review all of the administrative duties and come up with a plan to divide those among the existing staff and propose appropriate compensation for their additional duties. And he believes that he can have this plan ready to propose at our July board meeting. Other than that, we talked a little bit about the business manager hiring process, which we've already been through, so. That is what I have to report regarding Dr. Johnson's efforts so far. He does, he did say he is trying to stick with the budget that he gave us. I think he said 15 hours of his $250 an hour time. I, I will say I've appreciated his efforts very much. And he's been very forthcoming, and I think he's kept the focus on the positive. And he's, I think, being efficient with his time, so. That's what I have to report. Okay, is there a motion then to approve the reports that we've had? So, Nagel moves, is there a second?
Second.
Rosendall seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes. Now, the next item on the agenda is the letter. Okay, so, we're canvassing the election, so. One ballot, there were four absentee ballots out that were not returned.
That might be about, okay, three or four.
And one was returned with a postmark of June the 6th. So, that one, I'm holding in my hand, and I'm supposed to open it and compare to make sure that the signature is the same. But I'm not going to reveal to you who the name of the voter is so that we can honor the voter's privacy. Okay? Oh, so where's the, where's the signature? Okay, this is the ballot secrecy.
There's no question, boy, the second.
Well, I'm sorry, I don't think there's any signature on here.
I don't know.
Well, it was. No, we would have to compare with their application, so where's the application? You may as well go with, or I would think, I will, because we're not supposed to know anyway. There you go. Good impression.
But the candidacy.
Quick, I have a snack with it. Pretty going warm, please. Yeah, that'll be cool.
This, I think this is like the first tie in the state, because I know everybody's like, how are you gonna finish this?
I've had it called small. Superintendent. Teachers are all asking, how are you guys gonna finish?
Put the coin. If it still ends up in the top, it's still on the map.
Oh, yeah. Trust me, we're on the map, big time. First in the state, oh, that's gotta have the state.
If not, it's gotta still on the map.
All right, we have, relocated the absentee ballot application and the signature matches the signature on the back of this envelope. I'm looking at the ballots. And it's not initial, but it shouldn't be until.
Correct, you should initial it with your initials.
Okay, thank you.
On the backside.
Well, there's the election official.
Yep.
The ballot was cast for Rhonda Day. And yes to vote, to publish the minutes, so it's high.
And yes on the minute.
Yes, on the minute, and so does the board now act on? Okay, so.
Accept, takes up the results.
Accept the results.
As amended, as amended by you.
Okay, and so then the results would be, we simply need to announce the winning candidate.
Just the winning candidate, yeah.
And do we need to, the board needs to approve that.
Correct.
Okay, so I'm, I want Tom to share with me, with all of you, what I asked him. I said, okay, so are we sure that the, I assumed that this took place, but all the ballots were counted four times? Each election worker counted each of the stacks of ballots at different times, and they always came off the same, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
And so we will add one vote to the total for Rhonda Day and one vote to the total of yeses for publishing minutes. So, this board will now vote to declare Rhonda Day the winner of the in-town seat. And I guess I, I don't think anybody ever told me how many, how the votes were on the publishing of the minutes.
Oh, it was 217 to seven.
So, now it'll be 218, or?
Yep.
Okay. So, I will entertain a motion to approve the results of the election certifying Rhonda Day as the winning candidate and the, with 65 votes and then the publishing minutes with 218 votes. Nagel moves to approve the results of the election, as I stated. Is there a second? Einbuck seconds, is there any discussion? I just wanna say, but we didn't draw a half.
Well, you wouldn't have done that, it would have been done within three days.
Why not?
With the election.
I still am glad that it came down to the actual votes.
Drawing of the.
Yeah, all right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes. No, you should not.
Yes.
Raising up your board member now.
Oh, yeah.
And Ryan will still be with us to close out the 21, 22 school year, and it sounds like we may need to have some discussion about what day that meeting is going to take place, basically.
And how that technically works is Ryan, you're on the board until the annual meeting. So, if there are special board meetings between now and July, let's say it's 18, if you have a special meeting on July 7th, you're the board member now. You're the board member until the annual meeting. That makes sense?
And, and we will be having special meetings for interviews.
And it might be in July.
Yeah.
But you're, you're on the board, yep, okay.
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 All right, did we both? All right, so. Got that one. All right, next item on our agenda is the ADM report. And help me understand, if it's, if it's on our agenda under action items, that means we need to act. Some, some of these things are new, some things we didn't used to have to act on, I think, and now we do. So, I'm trusting that we are acting on the things here. I gotta get back to my packet. So, ADM report.
I'm searching for that, ADM report is basically what you're going to be paid on next year. Number of students, and this is where Tom will get the numbers to help get those final dollars from the state. So, the state numbers come from this report.
From the ADM, not the ADA.
No, ADA is average daily attendance, and that's, that's not, it's looked at, but it's not looked at for reimbursement.
That's what I thought.
Membership isn't that, not the. It's more or less, it's just a formality, but because the school board, somebody should sign it when it goes in, before it goes into the file, it should be approved.
All right, so I trust that, Tom, you will have this and I will be able to sign it after the meeting.
Yep, yep.
Okay, so, is there a motion to approve the ADM report as presented in our packet? Einbuck moves, is there a second? Nagel seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, the consolidated annual report, which was also in our packet. And is that the, that's the title program, right?
Yes.
I felt like we were seeing that report twice in our packet. I, was it part of the, sort of part of the principals' report, and then it was also published as the ADM? And that are the consolidating part, which is fine, I just.
And so, just so you have a heads-up, why you're approving this now instead of in August, when you normally would, they changed the system around a little bit, so the narrative is what you're approving now. The budgetary must still be in August. Just be aware of that. Have to, otherwise I can't submit it.
Okay, so the consolidated annual report is in your packets. You've had an opportunity to review it, is there a motion to approve? Rosendall moves to approve the consolidated report, is there a second? Einbuck seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye, those opposed say no. Motion passes and the consolidated report is approved. Next is the transportation report for 2021, 2022. All these need to be signed.
Again, it's more or less just a formality. And gives you a chance to look over what the numbers were for sure. You will be, this is where the reimbursement for the transportation piece in state.
Okay. Um. So, how do they figure the reimbursement for those three? Is it five a mile or what, three?
There's miles and riders.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the transportation report? Rosendahl moves to approve the transportation report. Is there a second? Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any questions or discussion? Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Transportation report is approved. Next, we'll have a first reading of the elementary and the junior high and high school handbooks. Those were in your packet. And. And then the same ones that were emailed to us. Yeah. I highlighted something in the elementary under athletics, participation and eligibility. Not really a problem, but the, the language. Good standing is really repeated almost word for word later. Not hurting anything, but probably not necessary. And we've already approved the hot lunch or the meal prices, so those were updated. And I remember several years ago, we approved the meal prices, but they never got changed in the handbook. So did they get changed? And this is a first reading, so we'll be looking at these again. Question on the tornado. Is that, I noticed it was changed in there, but then at the end of that paragraph. And so the students will still be allowed to leave school on Fridays at three oh three. Is that gonna change to three oh seven or is that?
It would be three oh three. So what it was before was a three oh three, and I just forgot to update it for passing time. So it's just like three oh seven.
I want to thank you both for putting the bullying form in there. I think that's nice. That's easier for people to find. Okay, is there a motion to approve what you have seen as the first reading of the student handbooks for elementary and junior high high school? I think that motion. Heimbach moves to approve the student handbooks first reading. Is there a second?
Sorry.
Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next action item is a open enrollment application for a student, a family that wishes to enroll out of our district. It has been approved by the admitting district. And it requires our action. Is there a motion to approve the open enrollment application in our packet? Nagel moves to approve the open enrollment application. Is there a second? Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next, we have the first reading of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year budgets. I sent a few questions today to Tom and Mr. Getz and had some answers. I was just a little confused, but it looks like a lot of the. Current school year estimate that we're, we're, we're ending the year, but it doesn't look like the numbers are. They're just the budgeted numbers. And I know a lot of reconciliation needs to be done at the end of the year, and it may just be that a lot of that stuff isn't done. So I'm not quite sure if we know where our ending fund balance will be. But keep in mind, this is just a first reading. Lots of moving parts. I had some questions, but didn't get a chance to email them out. Okay, so when I was looking at the library section, the library aides salary budget of balances have increased of almost thirty-five percent. I don't know why that.
From twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah.
From budget to.
Yeah.
Anything I can think of is that she may have put it into.
But aren't her hours, what are her hours now? It's still a huge increase for.
Thank you, it's two hours.
Yeah. That jumps right out.
What percent increase was that? Because if she's six hours and she goes to eight, that's a twenty-five percent increase. But that sounds like.
We left her at six.
Okay, but twenty-two, twenty-three, you did move it default. Oh, oh, so that really shouldn't be much of an increase. Okay. I'll check on that one. Okay.
Well, a lot of the health insurance ones don't make sense to me either. Well, and then like Dobitz is, Mr. Dobitz is, his decreased, but Chris does increase nine thousand dollars. I don't know if they're switching plans.
Well, they made a switch plans. They went from one single NSBD and swapped out.
But a lot of those health insurance, I'll tell you.
How, my biggest question is. I mean, are ending balances or.
They're trying to don't, right?
Well, not trending, I mean.
Yeah, yeah. And to be honest with you, I did not have a lot of time for this. I basically, this is basically what they put together.
I just didn't have time to do it. This is not acceptable, so I'm gonna have to do something.
I mean, just compared to the last one, we had seen last one, it's far worse than that.
Yeah.
Oh, is it? Okay. I mean, okay, the one last one was better. Now this one is much worse. One of the things is Tom, when we had our final, final ADM, we came in three students less. So there's thirty thousand that is gonna change it, just so you're aware. I know it's not near what you're probably finding, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware, there's some of those things that are starting to come forward now that. The actual numbers instead of a projected number.
Transportation was right on. The ridership was down and the miles were up. That, that's gonna be washed. And that's a small piece of the puzzle anyway. But, yeah. I, I honestly didn't have a lot, a lot of time to go through this, so I wanna. I, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, okay, but one thing, I don't know that it has a special transfer.
It does not.
So that would be.
Even the building funds.
The building fund.
Or projects, there's just. Without doing the science project, I thought it was better.
Well, I don't know, that was never taken out. I don't know that that was taken out.
I think there's a fair amount of work to be done.
Yes, yes.
Are you gonna be able to?
I'll, I'll work on it, yeah, yeah. And I don't know if the building fund can end in the negative. That's a concern of mine as well.
Yeah.
I don't know that that can end in the negative. I don't know that. I don't know that for sure. I'd have to call on that.
And then there's some that, some categories, we don't have anything in the budgeted amount, like heating fuel for facilities. Or consultations, there's nothing in the budget at all. So. And I can email.
Email, yes, yes, because I'll take a look at those.
And I didn't even get all the way through it.
Yeah. It was taking me a while just to figure out how it was put together.
Right.
And where the numbers are coming from. I have other, I have other questions. Also as well that. They don't, it doesn't fit.
One thing, maybe it's a discussion we can have at our board retreat, but I think we need to revisit the driver's ad again. Because. But just doing the math on the driver's ad, so there was thirty-five students this year, I believe, right, Carrie? At a hundred and fifty, we only brought in five thousand four hundred and fifty. You figure the thirty-hour class time and their driving time. That took care of all of, all of what we brought in, and so that's not even our gas.
What's that stated? Is it tricky formula? But. Is it like, is it like four kits?
Honestly, it's model four.
It's been, so it'd be like thirty or forty thousand we're bringing in from the state ADM.
For drivers.
For drivers, yeah.
So that's the piece I was missing.
That, yep, that's the piece.
Okay.
Yeah. We should be leaking money.
Well, I would like to see, I think we should be able to bring them up to at least pay the salaries.
Almost district come out here. Drivers added the money.
Do we have any students from outside the district this year? Because we charged them higher. All right, lots of good questions. Please send your things you noticed and your concerns to Tom. I, I, I felt like I was trying to, my head was trying to find a list of. Okay, so like I'm on page of our packet, page one hundred and three, and it's. Page, I'm, I'm in the building fund. And it indicates that we had for expenditures, construction services and improvement projects, we had roof, LED garage door, sewer, fire alarm. And I, I'm seeing four hundred and eighty-two thousand and four eighty-seven. And then a hundred and twenty-five thousand in construction services, but I don't know what all of that is. And like the hundred and twenty-five thousand is a wrong number, so it can't be the exact dollar amount that was spent. So I, I just think there's some more work that needs to be done. Which is understandable, given that. In transition. However, we would like to have an approval of a first reading, or isn't that necessary?
Because we need two readings before August ten. So if we just do this one.
And we can still discuss it in July. Definitely discuss it in July and perhaps at a retreat, but we need to have an approved first reading to say if we've seen it.
At least you've reviewed it. That's all it is, is review.
All right, is there a motion to approve the budget in your packet as our first reading of the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three? Nagel moves to approve the first reading of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Is there a second? Second. Rosendahl, second. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Absolutely.
So when I work on this, is it, would it be okay with the board if I shared this with a board member or two board members? To look at it, to see if there's anything out there that I'm missing? Sheila, would you wanna? Anybody else would? I'll share it with one of the person, I don't want to share it with the two, if anything. Okay, okay, I'll send it out to you guys, and you can critique it. And I'll, Dave will look at it too. I mean, that's, that's a forgotten conclusion, if you look at it. Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Staffing, okay, the teaching contract was not in your packet. We have one teacher contract for approval. And it is for Kayla Treebolt, who was hired for an elementary position. It was second grade, right? Okay. Oh, I cannot sign this.
Yeah, the total salary?
Yeah.
We'll correct that. Five hundred and forty-three dollars.
I think it should be forty-three dollars.
It should be.
I'm just gonna cross.
Cross out the five and initial. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I noticed that you.
All right, I'm seeking a motion to approve the contract of Kayla Treebolt, first-year teacher. At forty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Is there a motion to do so? Okay, Heimbach moves to approve the Kayla Treebolt's contract. Is there a second? Thorpe, seconds. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion passes. The next action item is business manager staffing, which we already took that action at our special meeting. Just for the public, at which who might just be joining us. The, we are going to be interviewing Rachel Boquatt, Janelle Hedicke, and Shannon Johnson. We will be setting up those interviews soon. Other staffing. Per our, my report that. Dr. Johnson recommended naming Mrs. Sell as interim. Superintendent for the district. We would like to take some action there.
Do you have salary?
No, we are working with Mr. Johnson to. To determine what duties will be. Divided among the interim superintendent, the principals, how the principal duties will be. Distributed. He recommended. A salary increase for Mrs. Sell in that position, however. He wants to work with a smaller group of board members and staff and Tom to come up with those things. And then so for other, for other staff who may be taking on, who will, would be taking on additional duties. As an example, he suggested, we'll take a look at those duties relative to say a head coach position. Not that, not that just because somebody is doing one or two more things, it's going to be that salary. But he's, he will be working with a small group to both work on duties as well as proposed compensation. And that plan, we would hope to help. Ready for our next board meeting. I will make a motion to put Mr. Getz on administrative leave starting July first. So that we may have a smoother transaction in our transition here. Monica Heimbach moves to place Mr. Getz on administrative leave from his position of superintendent effective July first. For a smoother leadership transition for the district. Is there a second? Is there a second? Nagel, seconds. Is there any discussion? Sure. I believe we discussed paid. Is that part of your motion?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Good. So is that, is that acceptable? Yes, okay. It's, to clarify the motion, it is paid leave effective July first. That is okay with both the mover and the seconder. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Rosendahl.
Yes.
Thorpe. Nagel. Yes. Heimbach. Yes. Meal votes, yes. Motion passes four to one. All right, so is there another motion with respect to an interim superintendent? We will make a motion to name Anna our interim superintendent. Nagel moves to appoint Anna Sell, our interim superintendent, effective July first. And to clarify, the, the, the compensation will be negotiated. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. Heimbach, seconds. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. I will call the roll. Thorpe.
Yes.
Nagel. Yes. Rosendahl.
Yes.
Heimbach. Yes. Meal votes, yes. Motion passes five to zero. So with that, I would like to thank Mr. Getz for your work here. It's been a challenging situation for all of us. I was hoping that it would all work out better than this, but it has not been all bad, and I do appreciate. It's been a challenging situation for all of us, I was hoping that it would all work out better than this, but it has not been all bad, and I do appreciate. Your efforts for us, and we wish you the best as you move on to your next role. All right, with that, Mrs. Sell, obviously, we will be having further conversations with you, and as you communicated with me that you do have some travel plans, we will be working with you as best we can to. Have meeting times in July that you'll be able to be with us. All right, with that, our next item, which we added to our agenda, was fund transfers. The first one is, I believe we will be transferring from the special reserve to the general fund. The intent, I believe, was to transfer the maximum amount that we're allowed to transfer, which is fifty percent, and almost ever since I've been on the board for, for ten years, it's. The, the amount in there has been two hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and something, or two hundred and something, so it's about two thirty, so we would be transferring. Fifty percent, approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand, but it would be fifty percent. Is there a motion to transfer fifty percent of the special reserve fund to the general fund?
I'll make a motion.
Thorpe moves to transfer fifty percent of the special reserve to the general fund, is there a second?
Second.
Rosendahl's second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Just to clarify, this is for the sewer projects. Well, it will be moved to, I, I think that was our intent, but now it's, it's, the next step is to move it then to the building fund to cover whatever needs are there.
And there won't be, there shouldn't be a reason this in the minutes.
Okay, okay.
The certification you need to know, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
So. Where was I, did we both? No. Okay, well, thank you. We're still discussing, usually we discuss it before we have motions. Is there any further discussion? Would you call, recommend a roll? Okay, is, I will call the roll, Heimbach, yes, Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thorpe?
Yes.
Nagel, yes, meal votes, yes, motion passes five to zero on special reserve, transferring fifty percent to the general fund. Now, um. So is that the only, the entire amount we want to transfer to this general fund, or which, do we need to do that now, or should we wait until we get, you get things?
No, you can, would you now transfer fifty percent to the general fund?
Yeah.
Now you need to have a motion to transfer from the general.
Okay.
And then this one, you need to name a dollar amount, you can't name half of.
Half, give that up, yeah, right.
Yep. One hundred and fourteen thousand nine seventy-five point eight-six. Yeah, twenty-nine, nine fifty-one.
Ah, yeah. Okay, is there a motion to transfer from the general fund to the building fund, one hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred seventy-five dollars and eighty-six cents?
I'll make the motion.
Rosendahl moves to.
The previous number. Previous number didn't. There you go.
I would say that. Nagel's second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Tom, you mentioned earlier that you don't know if the building fund can end in a negative, and so we may need to transfer more at some time when, when we have.
Right, or, or take some of the building fund expenditures and put it in the general fund. How have you run it?
Okay, all right, so is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call the roll, Nagel, yes, Rosendahl?
Yes.
Thorpe? Heimbach, yes, meal votes, yes, all passes five to zero. All right, that is all we have for action items, this policy review, we have one second reading, that wasn't in our.
It wasn't, because I don't know where to find it.
Okay, that's why, I think we'll just, we'll just, we can, what was the policy, do you?
People that, so I don't know.
I can't remember. I'm pretty.
Table to the table, okay.
We will, we will defer back to our future board meeting, okay, and there are no first readings, so we will move on then to the minutes. Okay, I had a couple things, on the special meeting. No, on the May tenth regular meeting. Hearing was to continue the priority tasks at thirty-five dollars per hour. I, when I created the agreement with Valley City Public Schools, I had written down the number thirty-five dollars and nineteen cents.
Is that even though?
No.
Which is what her salary came out to, but at that meeting, we did say thirty-five dollars.
Okay, so we did agree to thirty-five dollars for April, and, but that doesn't affect what we've done for Valley City Public Schools, you guys remember.
Right.
Says, okay, very good, then, the other item on the May twenty-fourth special meeting. On the motion regarding the superintendent position, it says Nagel motioned and Heimbach seconded to approve, accept.
Yeah.
The resignation, and I, I re-listened to the meeting and the word was accept, so I would like to strike out the word approve and leave it as only accept. Other than that, does anyone have any additions, corrections, clarifications to the minutes of the? May tenth. Regular, the May twentieth special, the May twenty-fourth special, the June third special, or the June ninth? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes with the one correction?
Let me mention.
Heimbach moves to approve the minutes with the one correction that was noted, is there a second? Rosendahl's second, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, the motion passes. All right, next we'll have the review of financial reports, we typically act upon the three listed reconciliation, balance sheet, and revenue and expense report in a single motion. Reports within your packet, is there a motion to approve? So, Nagel moves to approve the reconciliation, the balance sheet, and the revenue and expense report, is there a second? Thorpe seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no. The motion passes, finally, the review of bills. There were several pages of bills in our packet, if anybody has a question, even if you want to move to approve, then you can still ask the question.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Rosendahl moves to approve the bills as presented, is there a second? Okay. Heimbach seconds, is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any questions to discussion on the bills that were presented for approval? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed say no, the motion passes. With that, we need to set our next regular meeting date. Mrs. Sell, you are leaving the country on July the eighth. Returning on the eighteenth, did you tell me?
Yes.
I'm assuming that we'll be having some meetings between now and your departure with Dr. Johnson. He wants at least one board member on that, he said two, so now we've got Sheila and Robert working on the budget with Tom, he also wants Tom to help with the transition team. I'm willing to be on the transition committee. Ryan, you're.
I wish you'd like to be.
Maybe makes a lot more sense if it was Monica. And we appreciate you too, Ryan, thank you for your efforts, and, you know, it could be an opening again sometimes. So, with that, looking at our calendars. When do you think we can close?
Well, I thirty-first.
July thirty-first?
No, to be honest with you, I'm gonna need time.
Yeah.
Because, because we're gonna be, hopefully we have someone new coming in, come June thirtieth, I'll be able to spend more time on this. I'm thinking like, when, when do you normally meet on Tuesdays? So. About, about Tuesday, the twenty-sixth of July.
Feels like a long way away, but I can do that.
We have specials, I mean, we have special meetings in between, but that'll be the regular one that gives us time to.
Okay, and so for closing out twenty-two school year, we, we can wait and do it then?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. The financial report, I believe, is due in September, used to be July thirty-first, now it's September ninth or something now, but.
Does that conflict with your weekend?
You're going to twenty-sixth.
I have, well, I have state board on my calendar for the twenty-fifth, but we, twenty-fifth, but we don't, we don't, so that doesn't conflict, but we don't usually meet in July.
Evening, morning, I don't know what you guys. It doesn't matter, doesn't matter to me, so.
I'm, I mean, during the school year, I, I always liked meeting early in the morning, but summers, I usually do on a. Yeah.
You will be, yeah, harvesting mostly a thirty-day coin.
They'll be harvested, they may be harvested later this evening.
Yeah, right. Maybe not, hopefully not, okay.
Okay, so, shall we six-thirty, six? We have so heavy lifting. Six o'clock PM, that's a double one, yeah, we have the closeout meeting and then the reorg.
Yeah, using audio for the closeout meeting.
Yeah.
Yep, you're in the first part, and then you, you go.
Or I can stay.
Or you can stay, you can stay and heckle the board, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
So how about, you know, we can revisit it, but how is everybody's first week of August, if we want to do a little deeper dive in some things?
I'm. Six, six months back home in the late summer first. So I'd prefer not to do seconds, okay?
So not August one or two. But maybe the third or fourth?
Yeah, it's not, yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, that'd be a Friday. Maybe August third or fourth for a retreat? I'm looking at Ryan. Rhonda will just have to come and tell it to me. All right, let's tentatively say August the third at six o'clock. And again, we'll have committee meetings and leadership meetings and budget meetings, so. Do you want the, the regular, and we'll, we'll need to approve the budget no later than August the ninth, because we have to submit it on the tenth. Oh, and then, oh, yeah.
That should, I, that would probably be very on the twenty-sixth.
Oh.
The budget, July twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we'll have shared it with Sheila, Robert, too, and, yeah. Yeah, we'll have shared the budget with them, so.
And so. Our regular Tuesday, our regular August ninth board meeting, are we wanting to go back to mornings then, or seven AM? We can revisit it. Get closer. All right, and with that, I'm looking at also, not listed here, but business manager interviews, hopefully Thursday. The twenty-third. Three days from today, Tuesday, the twenty-third, something like one o'clock, two-thirty, and four o'clock in this room. Can you reserve the room for us? Okay. All right, I will make those contacts either tonight or tomorrow morning. As we discussed. With that, or anything else for the good of the order? Thank you, the meeting is adjourned, seven thirty-six PM.